Mr. Sanders, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, would you care to say a prayer this morning?
Not really, too much ahead.
Sam? Thought I'd ask.
If they have a call before this morning, say thank you for the love, mercy, and grace. And as you just watch over the goddess, goddess is the community, goddess is accounted by a commissioner of law. We've got a lot of decisions they have to make. Just be with us, Father God, in spirit, and help us to do your will and honor it. Please forgive us for what we've done, Jesus, and amen.
Amen. Thank you. Morning, everyone. I'm gonna start with approval of the minutes. Have a minute for September the fourth. Do I hear a motion approved?
I have a motion approved of the minutes for September the fourth.
Do I hear a second? Got a motion by Bob, second by Joel, all in favor.
Aye.
Abstain?
Reason to abstain because you were...
I was not present. All right, approval of claims and payroll. We have a total payroll and claims of nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents. We have payroll at three hundred and five thousand, eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. Regular claims, a hundred and thirty thousand, nine sixty-seven and ninety cents. Out of cycle, five twenty-four, four twenty-three, thirty-nine, again, for a total of nine, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four oh nine and forty-two cents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for nine, nine hundred and seventy, four hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents pending. We abstain.
Thank you, Joel. Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me a second. Folks, I've gotta get the attorney on the phone here. He is not present today.
Morning, Gary.
Morning, Dana. Okay, I got you on speaker here, so we've already started, blue minutes and claims. So we'll get to those contracts agreements here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, budget copies. Sheila, you wanna touch on that real quick?
It looks like this. This is the last council meetings. This is the current total numbers pending. Council has called special meetings on September the thirtieth to make a couple of adjustments. Other than that, this is pretty much the ballpark. We do or will need to decide if we're going to increase the insurance line item based on current information we've received from the insurer. But we got a couple more weeks to maybe get the final numbers.
Thank you for that. And since you touched on that, I'm gonna go ahead and expand a little bit. IU Health has merged or been bought out by another company, which will not affect our insurance through the end of this year. We'll be renegotiating come November. We kinda planned on the twenty percent increase, and we're not sure exactly where that's gonna fall. So as this develops, we'll get more information and find out. The company that bought them is a division of Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is good insurance, but normally it's higher than everyone else. So we'll, we'll get into some negotiations here in November and see what we can come up with. But as of right now, nothing's affected through the end of the year. Okay, jail update, not a whole lot there. We've got a letter from Rogers Group about the property out there. I do have a two hundred and fifty-page environmental study that looks like it's all in good shape. I didn't bring it with me today because it's, I just got it and it's two hundred and fifty pages, so I haven't even had time to flip through it. But the attorney has, so enough being said there. We have a board of works and safety letter, and we have found out that that is the commissioner's responsibility through Dustin Meeks from Barnes and Forenberg. And Dana, you have looked at this and approved it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have two here for a signature. You guys got copies of this?
I do. Oh, my goodness.
You wanna take a look at this real quick before we sign it or approve it? It just states the fact that the commissioners are the board of works and public safety.
I have seen that as good. Thank you, Bob.
With that being said, do I hear a motion to approve, to be signed by myself?
I'll make that motion here.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
You have the basket down there, Joel?
No, I don't have one, but here, I'll set the other stuff.
Okay. Planning Commission, Susan. Morning.
Good morning. The planning commission had a re, had a rezon request at their August meeting for a property owned by Sherman C. Properties LLC. They're, they were requesting to rezon the property from single-family residential to multifamily. The property is only one acre. The planning commission gave an unfavorable recommendation to this property, and the owner is here with us today, so if you wanted to ask any other questions.
Bob, I'm gonna let you take lead on this, since you sat on the planning commission and you were involved in these conversations.
The owner is here? Oh, okay. And stuff, and...
Good morning.
You wanna explain what you explained to us on the planning commission?
Um, yeah, so my plan was just to rezon the property to multifamily. Like Susan said, the property's been used for that purpose for over twenty years. I'm just gonna put another mobile home on that particular parcel. And like I said, that, that's what the property has been used for prior to me even purchasing the property. It was my understanding that maybe some zoning things had changed since I had purchased the property. So in order to make any changes, I would need to get it rezoned, so.
And planning commission did recommend unfavorable, and I'm still with that. We're going with the planning commission's thing, and except the other two members here and stuff. But sir, I am still unfavorable.
Okay.
So the property had been used prior as a mobile home, or kind of, there's two pieces, he owns two pieces there. But once the trailers or manufactured homes had been removed, after six months, he could replace that in their current, or their previous locations. So once he did that, they had to come into compliance, so.
Joe, you have any discussion on this?
No, I'm just looking at the votes, and there were seven out of the nine that voted against.
Yep.
So two perhaps, and I assume from me.
I don't think two was there.
Now, I'll go with the majority vote here.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion either to approve or deny based on planning commission. Somebody wanna make that motion?
I make a motion that we go along with the thing as unfavorable, so we deny the, the plan.
Got a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Election Board. Okay. Treasure confidentiality. Dana, you've looked at this agreement, correct?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay.
It's with the Indian Department of Revenue, so it's pretty much negotiable, but, but yes, I looked through it.
Okay, good deal.
That's what I was waiting on, 'cause I had to go back for Dana.
Shelley's Hill here, you signed this agreement. Well, it's been approved, we're good to go. Yep. We, we don't have much choice.
We got, we got choice.
We can take a hold on it. Let's go ahead and make a motion for Shelley to agree to her, to sign her contract.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you. We're gonna do that again with the recorder. Let me pull that one up here. Again, Dana, you went through this. This is to get the books over to electronics, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, sir, and what it will allow is for those data now to be searchable, which will be a great benefit to the county.
Okay, yes. All right, and I believe that Loretta is the one that signs this as well. So do I hear a motion to approve the recorder to sign her contract for her media conversion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Didn't get to sit down very long, did it?
I know.
Had to go back work.
Nine one one.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dana, have you went through this agreement as well?
Yes, sir, I have gone through that one as well. I have no personal question.
Okay.
Dana, last night they got back to me, I have just a couple of things that I had them add to the contract. I wanted them to be responsible for the FCC licensing. And then I had them also add that they're responsible for all the equipment listed on the back page. So just a couple of minor changes. The rest of the contract stayed the same.
Okay, yeah, that should not be, be an issue.
Okay, just all equipment here. It's listed on this back page, yep.
So it would be changing from J and K to ECS?
And this is simply a maintenance agreement, Sherri, right? It's not a purchase for anything.
No.
It's just simply a maintenance agreement, okay?
They're responsible for the upkeep of the radios inside the dispatch unit?
I don't have a problem with it, Gary. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve if you'd like.
That'd be great. Got a motion by Joel to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
And I believe this requires all three of our signatures. Do we have an official copy here? I think we do.
Well, that one's got to change.
Right, you're gonna, yeah, sign the...
The one.
I mean, yeah, that's what she said, Gary.
Let's sign this one here, then. How's that?
That's good.
Just, just give me a second.
I'll just give that back to Sheila. Need a copy after Sherri gets it back. Anything else?
No.
Okay. We'll get this signed and get it back to you. Get a copy to Sheila, and we'll be good to go.
Yes, and that is a switching of companies, so I will get a termination letter out to the current company that they have been using.
Okay, thank you. Jack, I'm gonna go ahead and bring you up here real quick, since yours is short and sweet. Get you back rolling. How's that?
We hope.
Yeah. Dana, having had a chance to talk to you on this, we're gonna do a burn ban declaration. Jackson went in and done the, opened up the PDF. We've got the dates changed from the letter that we did last, we say November. So everything is, is up to snuff, just like it should be, just with the dates changed. We're gonna try to fall in line with thirty-five other counties and states. Not that we can enforce this, but at least we can get it out there and let people know that, you know, there is an issue and try to be smart. It does give the fire department authority to go out and put out a fire if they feel that it's a hazard to the county, so.
I think there should be some things, if somebody intentionally sets a fire.
Well, then we've got, that's another issue, but yeah. So anyway, we've got a declaration order here, twenty twenty-four. I'm assuming, Jack, did we sign one back in the winter with the tornado, or was it, have we done one of these yet this year? I don't think we have, have we?
June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth, okay. So this will be O two. Sheila's shaking her head, yes, okay.
I think she's earned.
Come on, Jack.
I know she is.
Yeah.
So we have a declaration of local disaster emergency. In this case, it's burn ban. Yeah. Declaration twenty twenty-four O two. Bob makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joel, all in favor?
Can I say something?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
There, just so Dana's completely clear, these documents are identical with the exception of on number two. As you go down there, what's actually declaring number two, the old words, word was inter-jurisdictional, and the new document just says jurisdictional. I think that's completely irrelevant, but I want to bring it to his attention and yours.
Do you got it, Dana?
Yes, yes, sir. I, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, sir, yeah.
I want to thank you, Jack, for the communication involved in, in organizing this. Appreciate that. Got a lot of nice feedback. Well, we got feedback.
There you go, sir.
That's important, so appreciate the, they're reaching out.
A lot of chiefs involved.
Yeah.
And they did, and I, and, and kudos to those folks for, for paying attention.
And as always, when you call the auditor's office and they need something, I need something, it seems like they stop what they're doing and take care of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ben.
Happened again. Sheila, we're doing it down there, and I really appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. All right, Greg. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, guys.
Do that.
No kidding, he's always gotta do that.
A little update before we get into some of the other items, Commissioner. Beach Church Road called a replacement is going well. The deck was poured yesterday. Guard rail was going up this morning. That being said, that's been poured as a deck, and it needs to cure for at least five days.
You got it.
People are gonna see the road and...
Do we have a detour there?
Yes.
Yeah, right by my house.
But it has to remain closed until the cure process. Bandy Road Bridge work content, work continues. I am told that it is on target, and work will begin on the Clash Road Bridge in October. Of course, tells me that the Bandy Road Bridge will be done prior to, is that saying it's going to Clash Road?
Did we come up with a decision? You and I talked about them moving to Bridge fourteen?
I'm getting ready to bring that up.
Okay.
Commissioners of the council did approve funding. We're up to thirty thousand dollars for the work for light. Work one fourteen, which if can work, after working with United Consulting, they can move the crew from Bandy Road and put it in between. Which I think is the proper thing to do.
Did they give us a timeline on repairs at fourteen?
Three or four weeks.
Greg and I talked about this, and I told him I thought it was a good idea. He agreed. I, I wanna make sure that you guys, it's the historical bridge, it's shut down.
Sure.
So if everybody's in favor of that.
Absolutely. You wanna vote on that, Greg?
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Move from Bandy to...
Move from Bandy to...
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Is that a motion by Joel? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob, all in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Commissioners. Next thing, Commissioners, we need to speak about a little bit is the annual bids. As you know, if they're not in place on January first, we can't do business. I am, the bids are prepared and ready to go out, and I would ask that they at least be opened in the November, on the November twentieth meeting, and taken under advisement. Because they do take a while to go through, but I would like for them to be open on that date so we can proceed.
So when do you plan on sending those out? Now?
Yeah, we will advertise them forty-five days ahead of time. And I do believe forty-five days is the best possible schedule. We will advertise in five categories: aggregates, bituminous mixers, culverts, guard rail, gasoline, and diesel fuel. Last year, the commissioners chose with oil and lube to purchase on the open market, and we found things on sale.
I see where that school out there got a pretty good bid on their fuel. If they can, we should be able to, Greg. I think it was, it was country mart or something.
Does that have to be a hat he's wearing, then?
Well, yes, it is.
But, I mean, there are other companies that are interested in bidding fuel this year, so it could be a little more competitive. At least they have reached out to us, whether they submit a bid, I don't know.
That's a start.
That company there has a terminal in Monroe County. Am I correct in stating that? I think they do over on Second Street. I don't think we have anybody in this county with that.
No.
There's one down in Green County, too.
It doesn't matter, but...
Okay, Commissioners, I may email to you all. I don't know whether you have a paper copy or not. If not, there is a local agreement for the detour on State Road, for State Road sixty-seven. There's gonna be a debt overlay on the bridge that lies between Colros Road and Lingel Road, starting, let's see, starting ten one. The route totally makes sense, Commissioners. It would be Colros Road, the Jones Road, and then into Gosport. I have documented the roadway, and then we can keep check on it for damage. I would request that we be able to sign the road with no truck traffic, and I'm talking about commercial truck traffic. I don't want to miss any, farmers have to work, work hard this season. And we are well within our right to do that, because the state provides, and it is a task, a commercial truck route. I am concerned extremely Lingel Road is actually the most obvious detour, but Lingel Road has two bridges with lowered weight limits, one over a creek and one over the railroad. And they're not very high. They can't handle the school bus, Commissioners, that's it. So we're gonna have to keep a close eye on those bridges.
Where do they have truck traffic detour to? Is it through seventy on down to forty-six?
There actually, it is forty-six, and it is a long route, but their truck traffic is sixty-nine in the limit to forty-six. That is their official detour.
I say it's a long way either way around.
Yes, but they...
Riley may need some help on that. And Colros Road was a twenty-twenty community crossings road, so it's all pretty good pavement.
That's correct. If you don't have a paper copy, Commissioners, this agreement requires all three signatures. I did send a copy of this to Dana, but I have paper.
Yeah, we do not have, Dana, have you seen this? I, I know I read it in the email.
Yes, the letter of understanding.
Yeah.
Yes, I have read it. They, of course, are gonna be providing all signage with the, for the official detour, but they are not making any local, putting in local fines up for the unofficial detour. And it does say that Owen County will be responsible for signing any weight restrictions on the unofficial detour. So those would be good to be posted right at sixty-seven, so that, right on those, got an unofficial detour roads, so that they know, and trucks know that, you know, if they're gonna be able to go like...
Right.
I have the sign up there, the, they check, if trucks are using that, then they can be cited.
We just put no truck traffic sign. Do we have such a sign?
We, we have no truck traffic sign, Commissioners, and I, I think that's the best solution. I, who might inquire the sheriff what he thinks, the reason I said I believe that's the best solution is, I, I can't keep... We have congestion on these roads. We have our own, in that area, we have truck traffic that, or travel... We have our own, in that area, we have truck traffic that, or traveling to assault. We will have truck traffic, uh, local, we will have truck traffic, uh, from heavy harvest, that's, that's that area. So as far as weight...
We just need to look for commercial fleet truck type stuff.
Right, I don't, uh, I don't think if I just put a weight limit on it, how are we gonna discern from that?
Dana, did you hear that?
Yes, um, yeah. I would almost recommend putting both, um... You know, no trucks is gonna end this way. Does that mean, you know, maybe some trucks or whatever? So, uh, I think it's still should have, uh, a weight limit, uh, posted, uh, and it could just, it, it could just look like any other weight limit, sorry.
Agriculture's gonna be exempt anyway, so...
I'm sorry?
I said agriculture's gonna be exempt anyway, uh, so that's not a problem. So if we put a weight limit on it, uh, it'll just be dealing with commercial trucking, not agricultural, which will be, everybody's harvesting beans and things already, so... Does that make any sense, Greg? Does that help you? I...
So, so, yeah, I think both sides would be good.
Well, then I think, Commissioners, what we, we need to do is go to our, our go-to weight limit. Then the weight limit is eight ton when we have, you know, soft roads and those type of things. So, um, I, I think they need to be boasted then at eight ton. There's already an ordinance for that. Um, and then, like, you know, just local traffic, farm, commerce.
Yeah, local traffic only.
Their own will have to be exempt.
Yep. Well, it's pretty easy to determine if there's out of town or out of state commerce running out there. You know, they're gonna be labeled as...
Agriculture is exempt, so, I mean, really logging industry falls under that too. So that shouldn't be a huge issue. And then, you know, can be harmful delivery, construction and that type of thing, but if it's local, we have to consider that.
Sure. A- and we'll leave that up to the Sheriff's Department. I'm sure we'll get complaints out there as this thing unfolds. Do we have a time limit on this deck?
It is October first to November thirtieth.
Okay, so just two months. We've been down this road before, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
That's, uh, what they estimated, I guess that's...
So I'm gonna ask for a motion for approval, a letter of understanding for the unofficial detour. Ask for a motion and then in that motion, the Iowa Department will post that as an eight-ton weight limit, as well as local traffic only. Does that suffice things, Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Gary.
Got a motion by Joel, go here a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Requires all three of our signatures. Okay.
Commissioners, I have paper copies for anyone that would like. Uh, I have emailed, uh, to you also, um, documents from United Consulting in regard to applying for a federal grant for Bridge number fourteen. When I originally had talked with everybody in my office, there was an estimate, a just thrown out estimate of three point two million dollars. If you read that, um, that bridge, um, is over five million dollars to build estimate. Now, uh, it, again, there is a, there's different alternatives. I've read that, I, our portion would be over a million dollars that would have to be come up with in five years. Uh, that cannot be done out of the Highway Department. We thought we figured out if approved by the budget, how to save five hundred thousand. The county council put together a, um, committee, which I have not met with yet because we didn't have final reports. That is Nick Robertson and Earl Keen. I would request, uh, one of you, whether it be Gary, Asmile, as on, or if, however you guys wanna do it, but I, we all need to sit down and go over the alternatives and come up with the best solution, um, for the community. I must assure them, when you look at the entire process, total restoration might be our best option.
And I'm wondering that too. If we still save the money that we're talking about with the council, we can use those funds to do a restoration instead of a complete replacement.
That's correct.
A- and Mark's sitting back here with, with United shaking his head and I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's hard to figure out what you guys are gonna do.
Right, well...
Down to a single lane bridge, which you gotta figure out if that's the bridge you want or the something else.
I mean, the, the documents are available and I won't let anybody see them.
I, I...
Uh, but we're talking, you know, from over five billion dollars planned acquisitions and several things to, uh, you know, an estimate of under a million for, not much under a million, but a little under a million for complete restoration.
I, I...
Sounds like a clear choice.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the restoration. I, I would like to sit on this with the, the two council members because it's semi-district and it affects the citizens in my area. Something that also concerns me is we, we do this, Greg, you and I've talked about this a lot, these two bridges up there.
Yes.
We have Bridge fifteen south of that that needs some attention and, and I think that that's where we look at making an improvement so we can get semi-traffic grain trucks, whatever, livestock trucks out of there, uh, which we have all that in that area, a- and get this bridge, all I'd like to see this bridge is get it to the point where we can open up to where we can get a pickup truck and a camper across it because of those campgrounds in that area.
Well, gentlemen, in regard, excuse, I'm sorry, interrupted. Um, in regard to Bridge fifteen, uh, it is of great concern that we keep that bridge in, um, good repair. It has a lowered weight limit. I have had contractors, I had vendors look at that bridge. United has given opinion and not one have disagreed with, um, United's results. They all believe that the Bridge fifteen, if we do anything, calls for replacement. Now, it's not calling for replacement immediately, but if we replace that bridge, of course, that, that section of road is closed and then there is a great deal of, uh, mileage that people have to travel and emergency personnel have to get in there, so...
Right. Catch twenty-two, aren't we?
It, it is.
Well, we looked at that bridge last year, two years ago, to put a box culvert in there possibly.
Yes.
Can't do it, it's solid rock bottom.
Yes.
So, again, hands are tied. I think we move forward with the repair of fourteen. A- and back off of the, go ahead and applying for the grant for the bridge replacement. I just, I don't think that makes much sense for us.
No, I have to agree with, uh, well, it's not necessarily an agreement with Superintendent Mountain, but...
Yep.
We've got limited options here. Let's go with what we know and, uh...
Well, then I, I would like to schedule a meeting with the, the two council members and go over all these alternatives. They, they have supported us one hundred percent in regard to this, so...
So before we make any motion here, let's have that meeting and then we can get back to the table and...
I'll reach out to both today after, after the meeting and see whether we can make that happen.
Yep. And again, I'd be more than happy to sit in when that's going on too, so we can all come to the...
Um, the next thing, Commissioners, Parkview Estates subdivision, the roadways within, they were requested, uh, forgive me, I don't have the exact date to be put on the county, uh, road system. I went out and looked at the subdivision, made suggestions as to what needed to be done to bring, uh, the roadway up to par for us to take over and I requested it be, uh, crack sealed. That was done. Long story short, there was an issue at the time and, um, former county attorney, um, it, it got tangled. Uh, it's been brought back up, but again, the folks in the subdivision have done what they were asked to do in regard to getting, uh, the road up to standards, uh, for the county to take into the inventory. So I am putting it back before you, uh, for Dana, I guess for Dana to review. And then it would need, um, an ordinance, I guess, for the restoration.
Yes, require an ordinance. Dana, I, I pulled this subdivision up, you and I had spoke. Unlike a lot of the private roads, these are not to the middle of the road. These already have built-in right of ways, twenty-five feet from the center of the road. Uh, so there's absolutely no reason that we can't move forward with this. Uh, and Greg will attest, these are probably some of the best blacktop roads as far as county subdivisions that we have. Uh, again, these, I'm gonna go back maybe three years that just was discussed. That sound about right?
Yes.
Uh, we, we, Greg's recommendation was they crack seal the roads before we took them over. They did what they were asked to do and the ball got dropped. Uh, I have been contacted by these citizens out there again, uh, wanting to know, they thought it was taken over by the county and hasn't been. I, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion this morning that we adopt this subdivision into county, uh, roadway system, pending ordinance from council. Is there an issue?
I, I don't have an issue other than, uh, making sure that, uh, I think Greg and Dana should work closer to make sure that everything is, is perfectly despect before we proceed.
Right, we have to sign an ordinance anyway.
Absolutely, I, I...
But if you guys are good with that, a- again, these people held their head to the bargain.
They, they said exactly what they were asked to do, gentlemen. I just, I, I can't recall, I know it was commished. I mean, the former attorney said, no, I don't, I can't tell you why.
Well, I think Greg had mentioned this week and we spoke about it. It was some of that concern about these private lanes because some of these properties go to the center of the road.
That is correct.
And if that was the case in this situation, those parcels had to be changed. So this is not the case. These already are built in.
Yeah, we, we did speak about that and that may very well be the issue. I, I just can't speak to what that issue was.
But this is a fifty-foot wide roadway, it, according to what I'm looking on this map.
That's correct.
Yep, with a twenty-five foot easement. So all of it's taken care of as far as county standards and that's what we normally require, correct?
Correct. Again, I asked, uh, I was sent there, they did exactly what they were asked to do.
I'm gonna make the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion, I'm gonna make the motion, I'm gonna ask for a motion, uh, to move forward with bringing in the Parkview Estates into the county, uh, roadway system based on Greg and council's, uh, ordinance.
I'll make that motion, or else, yeah, I'll make that.
Got a motion by Joel, go here a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
So Greg will just let you deal with Dana on how you want it set up?
I, I, I think it's by ordinance or, I don't know what...
It is by ordinance, I'm pretty sure.
Resolution, but it's one or the other.
Yeah, yeah, we can, uh, adopt that and we can provide ordinance, uh, and add that to the road inventory and, uh, actually that's a benefit of having that much more road, uh, when it comes to funding.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioners, uh, the CCMG call for twenty twenty-five one is January fifth this year. As you know, that is an extreme amount of work before it ever gets to the point of going to the paper. And what I mean going to actually apply for the grant, I have a lot of work to do. In deciding, uh, I'm not deciding into putting the facts and the figures together, uh, for the grant. So, uh, I would ask that each of you get with me as to what you want in your district or whatever agreements that you come with if you're going to, uh, however you want to split that up, so I can be prepared to move forward to put that together.
I'd like to suggest that we do an administrative meeting as we've done in the past at the Highway Department with the three of us sitting there with Greg to determine what roads need to be done and, and if we need to, you know, share funding or whatever needs to be done. That's been the best scenario in the past. If we could get that done here with, sometime in the near future.
I will have, uh, for each of you, then I will get out to you by email, um, all surface requests also by citizens. It may not be popular sometimes, it doesn't go that way, but at least you'll have that information in front of you.
Would the first week of October, would that be a good time to do that? Give you a better time?
Yes.
Let me look at mine. If we could, let's tentatively try to...
I can throw that.
We have a meeting on that Wednesday. Would it be feasible just to meet after the meeting at the Highway Garage?
Makes sense to me.
How's that? The second?
Yes.
Whatever time that meeting's over, we'll just do it then. So October the second.
Well, I need to post anything at the garage saying there's going to be a...
It's administrative meeting. Not voting on anything, just discussing.
Chip, uh, just update on Chip Seal.
Thank you.
Uh, we were supposed to have started this week. There was a problem with, uh, the driver, uh, he was houred out. CDL driver, so that, uh, they actually want to start tomorrow.
It's unusual for a distributor truck driver.
Delayed on two occasions this week, so I just thought we would start Monday. That being said, we, you know, waiting on them, we could have been laying cold mix this week. So we lost out on a week of laying cold mix. Every day we've been prepared to lay this and, you know, at the last minute, we're totally...
You're down to your last few roads of that too, aren't you, Stockstill? Oh, we talked about Ellis Lake, is there still enough material to do that?
Pardon?
Ellis Lake, you mentioned that earlier, is there gonna be enough material to do that?
Stockstill Road is one of the telltale, Commissioners.
It is done.
You know, we, we have...
The only reason I ask Greg is I'm getting calls, you know?
We, we talked yesterday, um, or this morning, even possibly starting Stockstill Road tomorrow. If we started laying cold mix at Stockstill Road, we wouldn't get it complete. We would have to go to Chip and Seal and then go back, but that is a possible option. We've got a lot to do. But I'll, we'll just have to make that call as the day goes on.
I, I know you said, you're gonna say where you're at.
They should just all down there. I have nothing else, Commissioners, then?
The only thing that we've got, and we've, we've talked as a group about the ten-hour days. We feel like we're losing production because it's dark till quarter after seven. A- and we as a group have kinda decided that we're probably best to go back to five days a week. Two things, we're, we're losing man-hours, working man-hours because it is dark till quarter after seven and the guys are coming in at six. Se- second of all, we feel like there's a safety issue with these guys out in the dark. Hopefully that fits your schedule, but we can get them back. Because if we're losing an hour, hour and fifteen minutes every day of production, that's about eighty-eight hours a week of man-hours that we're not getting. So if we bump that back to the normal time, plus we're not getting that fifth day, so, uh, I think, hey, guys, jump in here. We've all had this discussion, uh, if you feel the same way, you don't, whatever, but, uh, I know we've all discussed it and agreed.
Yeah, I've always been for, whenever the schools start back in, going back to our five-day a week. And, uh, I still think that's the best idea, I really do. For, for safety of the guys... For, for safety of the guys, safety of the school buses.
I've always kind of left it up to superintendent, although I have to agree, I gotta run both sides of the fence here, uh, opinion-wise. I, I'm okay with however it works out, I've always left it up to the superintendent to make that call, uh, these gentlemen, you know, I have no problem going either way. So, uh. I mean, what do you think, Greg? I mean, I, do you, I mean, I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, do you feel like?
Well, no, uh, gentlemen, there's no secret, I don't like ten-hour days. I've never liked ten-hour days. It's the commission that put me on ten-hour days.
Right.
Now, I've taken, a- and it was for a reason.
Sure.
And I absolutely, at the time we went to those ten-hour days, I agreed with them. Um, and then, I can tell you that when we're on ten-hour days, um, I believe that we get more production than I'm getting, uh, I, I seem to get more production in heavy construction season. So the, when school was out, fit really well. We've had a lot of tasks this year, uh, so I've taken advantage of that as long as I can. I have no problem going back to eight-hour days, uh, quite frankly, if commission wants us to not work ten-hour days, doesn't bother me what else, but it has its benefits.
How about we, we agree to go back to eight-hour days starting Monday, and we stick strictly to the ordinance that's at hand for ten-hour days, and that's two weeks after school's out to two weeks before school starts? Is, is that fair?
That's fair.
That's, that's the ordinance that we all agreed on last year.
That's fair.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, so let's, let's do that, uh.
In, in all honesty, gentlemen, I, I think I've talked to all of you, I've taken advantage of the construction season.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it works out in your June and July?
Perfectly fine with me.
Okay, let, let's stick with that, and if, we can pull that ordinance, you probably have a copy out there, but I'm pretty sure it's two weeks after school's out to two weeks before it starts. That sound about somewhere in there, or, or a week? And, and that gives you all your June and July to get your major projects. That's all we have.
Gentlemen, I, I will tell you, making this decision for Monday, we, we will have a lot of overtime next week.
That's true, I'll start chipping and sealing them again.
That Chad just reminded me of that, but.
Well, but at least you're working, yeah, we're giving man-hours.
Yeah, still it doesn't.
Yeah. We're, we're not sitting out there for an hour doing nothing, so, guys.
And we'll, we'll have to, as, as commissioners here, we'll have to understand that that's.
Right.
We, we are gonna have overtime.
Well, you got that in special projects, too, we've got, we're paying that out of ARPA funds, so some of that may help you there. We can look at that as well.
I'll, I'll just have to look.
Yeah, well, we understand that, so there'll be no, there'll be no blowback on that for you guys, you know. We understand, if you get these guys.
I, I don't think there's any concern with the overtime, it just, the part-time, it but it's time to start laying part-time off.
Yeah, okay.
Since we're gonna go to the eight hours, the part-timers.
I wanna touch one more thing real quick, and you guys can get out of here. We had a discuss, we do have two people still on working as comp, that it's affecting the truck driving situation at the highway. I spoke to the insurance company, matter of fact, he called me, asking me about light duty situations. We do not have light duty at the highway. These particular individuals were asked to have a chair job, one had to be leg propped up during the process, I mean, it's just unheard of, so I told him absolutely not, it just didn't fit our, our policy, so we still have two individuals out until they're released. Uh, one looks like to be, one's ready to come back, but it's not been released by the working the comp doctor, so, uh, we'll get in there. Hey Greg, I'll talk to you about that in a little bit, I think I know where the problem's at.
Okay.
I'll, I'll call you. We're good, if you guys are. Thank you. Sheila and I already discussed that.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, guys. Electoral officials and department heads. No one? Public comment? Yes, sir?
Gentlemen, I sat here a month ago, I heard you guys propose a motion, uh, to put.
You wanna, wanna state your name and address, please?
My name is Will Collins Beck, I have three addresses, ten eight hundred Mill Grove Road, ten eight oh two, and ten seven nine eight, Mill Grove Road. Uh, I own home place Camp Brown. And a month ago, I sat here and heard you guys make a motion and hand it to the attorney to place an injunction upon Nancy Broken Arrow. There's not been any follow-up with any of that with me. I wanna know what's going on with that.
I wish I could give you more information on that, it is in the legal side of things. I don't know that we're gonna get a good verbiage on a cell phone, he's out of town. Uh, Dana, could we get with, could we get with this individual when you get back in town and discuss the situation at hand, so he got, has full understanding of what's going on? Uh, none of us sitting here is on the legal side of things, and, and I do not prefer to discuss it, 'cause I would just muddy it up, so, um.
What's the issue?
It, it's the Broken Arrow, uh, issue.
Yes.
So I'm gonna get this individual's phone number, and I'm gonna have you contact him direct, so you can discuss the situation, if you would, please? Alright, thank you. How's that? So don't get out of here before I get your information, okay? Jeff?
Good morning, Jeff Marks, East Creek Road, I have three quick items. Uh, the first is, um, so will the proposed twenty twenty-five budget, is it a, is it a available online, or is it, do we have to file a request for, or a concept?
You're talking about a council issue, not a commissioner issue, so.
It's, again, they're tentative, they're holding, there won't be a regular public hearing, and their October fifteenth meeting, and then the official document should be October twenty eighth meeting. But there's tentative numbers that are available, but they're not final yet, there still is meeting on the thirtieth that there will be adjustments made, and could be some adjustments made following or during the actual public hearing on the fifteenth.
So, is the best thing to do, wait for a statement, do you have?
That's the better thing to do, is that you have the exact numbers that are there. I can give you a current copy, but it's not the final copy.
Same thing, it's, it's not crisis, but I do have a little bit of those train ordinance. And, uh, I asked for it a month, two months ago, I told people it's not a crisis, but also, so.
I, I didn't hear the question.
Low train ordinance? Uh, I wanted to get copies of low train ordinance. It doesn't appear to be in the list of stuff that was put into whatever that fancy thing is.
The American legal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to check on that. I, I have a single copy I got through the highway, five or six, Greg may have it, a- and it's old, it, it is old. And it says that there's fifteen-foot rightaway to, to cut that brush back for, for the safety of the citizens, school buses, those type of things. I'll work on that, Jeff, get with Greg, and we'll make sure that that happens.
And the third thing, I may be asking for something that we guys can help put about. Do you have any idea when the UBO will show up in the nuts?
It has to go through, there's gonna be a public hearing, goes through the planning commission, uh, then it comes to us, I, I, I can honestly.
There, there's brochures sent out on all those meetings, uh, our first meeting's up on the third floor in the car room.
Okay.
And it, we, we discussed that last night, I can't remember exactly what date it is, Jeff.
So I can go with them?
But, yeah, everybody been mailed out brochures with the meetings, will be mailed.
Yeah, we sent those out countywide to stop a bunch of the conversation and questions and that kind of stuff. Auditor comments? Nothing. Commissioner? Why, do you have anything? Commissioners?
Just, just talking to Ryan after the meeting, that's all, if you got a minute. See you.
We have, uh, Apple Better coming up, hope everybody participates. Steve's worked real hard to get grass growing back out here on courthouse lawn, so we can put inflatables on top of it. But, uh, other than that, appreciate everybody being here, have a great day, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, we got payrolls or that stuff here to.
Sign.